All the meeting to order. First on the agenda is minutes? Anybody have?
I was not in attendance.
A motion?
Neither was I.
Somebody that was here?
Yeah, I could approve the minutes.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, is there any discussion?
No.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. All right. I believe the next item on the agenda is a public comment. Is there anybody from the public who would like to comment on something that isn't on the agenda? Is there anybody online? If not, we'll go on to the first agenda item. Cole.
Good evening, commissioners. I'm just going to pull up my PowerPoint here. Okay. For the record, Nicole Mardell, Senior Planner with Deschutes County Community Development. And let me see here. This evening, we're holding a work session to prepare you for a public hearing on June 26th related to a set of housekeeping amendments related to the state's farm and forest modernization code project. So just a bit of background, our project website and the full record is on bit.ly/farmandforesthousekeeping. So you can find all materials there. And our proposal this evening is essentially to amend the county code to integrate rule changes resulting from the state's farm and forest modernization project. So essentially just amending our code to be up to date with the state's rules. So a little bit of background on the state process. The 2024 Farm and Forest Modernization Project is the first of a multi-year effort to update farm and forest requirements. So of course, the state's farm and forest conservation programs have been in place since 1973, when the statewide land use program was created. And over the last 10 or so years, the state has heard from interested parties, their rulemaking advisory committee and the courts on a number of issues needing review. So this is essentially the first rulemaking package that was completed by the Land Conservation Development Commission, or LCDC, on their work plan. So the goal of this package is to incorporate key case law interpretations, conforming rule changes to bring rule into compliance with the Oregon revised statutes so that they're consistent and generally provide clarity and consistency for application of standards for common application types in the farm and forest zones. So this set of amendments was adopted by Land Conservation Development Commission in late 2024 and became effective on January 1st, 2025. So staff has been directly applying state law where necessary to land use applications when our code conflicts with these updates. So this housekeeping package, again, just amends the code that we have to be in alignment with state law and avoid any confusion with applicants. Wanted to provide a bit of background on the changes made by LCDC through this rulemaking process. So the first set relates to case law. One of the key amendments that they made was in regard to the farm impacts test. So all conditional uses in the EFU zone require the county to make findings under what's called the farm impacts test. And the county needs to find that the use, whatever that conditional use is, will not force a significant change in farm and forestry practices and will also not significantly increase the cost of farm and forestry practices on surrounding lands. So this rulemaking incorporates some standards from case law that provide the steps to have a sufficient analysis. So before this, counties were essentially just interpreting, you know, what that farm impacts test was, how to review it. This actually provides kind of step-by-step guidelines on how to evaluate that test. The next item relates to agritourism event standards. So there are four levels of agritourism events or other commercial activities related to farm use allowed in the Oregon Administrative Rule. They're based on intensity. And all of those need to demonstrate that they are incidental and subordinate to the existing farm use on the property. So for instance, you might have a vegetable farm and you want to serve farm-to-table dinners. But you need to ensure essentially that you're not becoming a restaurant that sells potatoes, you know? So you want to ensure that whatever the agritourism event or other commercial activity, again, is is secondary in nature to that primary agricultural use. For the most intensive level, the proposal also must be found to be necessary to support the commercial farm uses on the property or commercial agricultural enterprises in the area. So this rulemaking essentially codifies case law on how to evaluate those two standards. The next item relates to transportation facilities on rural lands. So this rulemaking update clarifies which transportation facilities are subject to the farm and forest impacts test. So it clarifies specifically that what are called, you know, sub-one uses in the EFU zone are those that are allowed outright by the state. Those are not subject to the farm and forest impacts test. So for example, these are things like reconstruction or modification of a public road, a temporary detour, things of that nature are exempt, whereas other transportation not included in that list are subject to the farm forest impacts test. The last item under the case law updates relates to private parks. So in the past, there have been a variety of activities that have been approved as parks in resource zones, things like shooting ranges, paintball courses, motocross tracks. And this rulemaking update codifies case law for the definition of a park and when it is inappropriate for the rural environment. So the rulemaking essentially changes the definition to note that a private park must, on an EFU property, must be an area devoted to low-intensity outdoor recreation uses for which the enjoyment of the outdoors is a necessary component or primary focus. So it kind of narrows in that scope of what a private park can be in the EFU zone. The next series of updates relate to kind of the other category as defined by the state. So these are things that aren't necessarily in case law, but might be general cleanup. So the first item relates to, sorry about that. So the first item relates to preparation of products on farmland. This just removes a circular reference, so it's just very much kind of cleanup. The second item relates to verification of income for farm dwellings and farm stands. So for each of these uses, there's a requirement that you have to, you know, kind of meet in terms of income. And it's been difficult to have a consistent manner to essentially verify that in a reliable way. So jurisdictions have done it kind of differently in the past. So this update clarifies that reliance on an IRS tax return receipt is acceptable as the minimum standard to verify income. And also clarifies that the county may ask for additional information, but overall, it doesn't change any of the requirements for that income itself or kind of the process for which that's reviewed. The next item, kind of the last item under this other category relates to home occupations. So this is, as noted by DLCD, the most common non-resource use in the EFU zone. There's a wide variety of activities that could be approved based on the previous definition. So you could have potentially a hair salon, a repair shop, a vet clinic. Wide variety has been accepted as a home occupation. And this rule update clarifies that the home occupation use cannot be more intensive in scale or scope than any other, than any of the other uses allowed in the EFU zone. And it also clarifies that the home occupation needs to be accessory to the residential use. So again, it can't be the primary use of the property. The last set of rulemaking updates relates to conforming changes. So this is kind of consistency with Oregon revised statute. So the first item relates to replacement dwellings. So this rule update modified some of the requirements for replacement dwellings in the EFU zone and also amended the requirements for replacement dwellings in the forest zone so that they mirror that of the farm zone, so that they're consistent across both zones. The second item just removes a one-time opportunity for template dwellings that expired in 2023. So it hasn't been available. This is just kind of removing that from the rule. Third item relates to non-conforming schools. So this modified some of the requirements for expansion of non-conforming schools in the EFU zone. This is specific to the location of where the expansion could occur and the type of school specifying that it would be a public or private K through 12 school. So kind of clarifying some of those details. The next item relates to campgrounds, removes just a very generic circular reference, kind of duplicative text. And the last item relates to processing of farm products. So this added rabbit and rabbit products to the list of acceptable products for farm product processing facilities. There were two items that were included in the rulemaking update but haven't been included in the text amendment package that we're including into our local code. So the first item relates to farm dwellings in conjunction with cranberry operations. There was essentially a change to some of these special provisions. We don't have this in our code currently. We just don't typically see the conditions for cranberry operations. So we didn't really need to worry about this one. And then the second one relates to childcare. So this, through this rulemaking update, childcare was added along with preschool record programs or school age recorded programs as a new use in the EFU zone. And it's a, what's called a sub-two use or a may allow use. So the county is not required to allow this, but may allow it. And we can also add our own conditions or requirements associated with it. So because we see this as involving policy choices, we didn't include it in the housekeeping package but are noting it for inclusion in a larger childcare amendment package that we have on our work plan. So you might see that coming forward in the near future. Now that you have all that background, this is getting back to our local county process. So what we're proposing through this housekeeping update is amendments throughout our code in our definitions, EFU and forest zone chapters, just to comply with this rulemaking. I wanted to note that a detailed list is on page two of your memo. That shows kind of the specific edits that we are making. And where possible, we tried to directly reference the Oregon revised statute and Oregon Administrative Rule. So rather than copying over text from the OAR or ORS, noting that the state is going to likely do additional rulemaking in the future with this modernization project, we're trying to kind of reference two statutes so that anytime it changes, we don't have to continuously do updates and have outdated code instead it can automatically update once the state completes certain rulemaking projects. So ideally, this will help avoid any confusion about which set of standards applies. So for example, with the replacement dwelling standards, I ran into an issue where an applicant had been looking at our county code, which of course is out of date. So when they saw that one of the requirements for when you had to complete construction of the replacement dwelling had changed, they were asking, you know, where did this requirement come from? So instead of having that situation happen in the future, it's just referencing out so people know where the correct information is. With that-
Chair, can I ask?
Oh, certainly, go ahead.
Nicole, sorry to interrupt your flow. It looks like you were winding up anyway, but just while you're on that particular point, if you don't mind me jumping in, because there are multiple references now throughout to ORS, similar to the amendment language that we're doing in clear, in regards to clear and objective, where we're now sprinkling throughout. So similar question to you that I think I asked, it might have been Tarek earlier, but in the electronic version of the code, will these references be links? And if they're not, strong suggestion that they might be, just from the user perspective, so that they're not, you know, referencing. I mean, our code is complicated enough when you get to state statute. It's very, well, it's challenging to navigate. So is the intention to have those references be links?
Yes, that is the intention. So we believe the last time we've spoken with legal counsel who manages our Muni code or online code, there is the ability to add a hyperlink so that folks can get that.
Now we're talking.
Exactly, yeah. So and I agree, you know, if you Google ORS or OAR, you can come upon some sources that aren't the official source. So it might be outdated. So we are working with legal to include that, and that's our goal.
Sorry to interrupt. Apologies, thanks, Chair.
Thank you.
No problem at all. With that, wanted to note no agency or public comments to date, and your public hearing is on June 26th. So I welcome any questions, if you have any.
Questions?
Got one more.
Sure, go ahead.
Probably a dumb question, undoubtedly a dumb question, but we're doing so much, you all are doing such extensive code revision in regards to clear and objective, probably separate chapters, I think, than this. But I'm wondering if there is any intersection between the amendments in regards to the clear and objective language and then these amendments based upon conformance with state rulemaking? Or if there's no intersection, that's fine as well.
Yeah, that's a great question. There was an intersection with some of the definitions work that Kyle Collins worked on. So we're just ensuring that, you know, when I began this text amendment process, that we're using the most up-to-date version of code. Kyle's edits were already effective. So, you know, the edits that he made during the clear and objective definitions update process are in the text amendments that you're seeing related to this. They're just, they're already effective, so we're building upon them. This doesn't affect, to my understanding, the Title 17 or Goal Five amendments. I don't believe either of those projects have edits within these specific chapters. But I might look to Will.
So these are compliant?
Yes, yeah, I believe so. Oh, yes, and they're generally, yes, because they're coming from rule. They're clear and objective is our understanding. And when we're reviewing them, yeah, we didn't, I think, well, I'll stop there.
Okay, that answers it. Thanks, Nicole.
Right, any other questions?
Oh, certainly.
So as I did read throughout the entire package, and I, before you brought up on the last page about referencing ORS and OAR, I just thought it was really, really smart to just reference that, not try to put our own verbiage in, and I appreciated it as I was reading it because I thought, okay, I know if I go here, I'm going to just get the most up-to-date information. And there's just no grace, so I appreciated that.
You look like you're thinking hard.
That smoke coming from my ears a little bit.
Well, I'm just wondering, in my, in reading the packet and stuff, you're taking the, you know, directive from the state and applying it to our code. And it's not a policy, this is not a policy change, it's just updating to make sure that we're in compliance.
That is correct.
So our role in reviewing this and having like a hearing and discussion is not necessarily to pick apart the packet. It's more to, what is our role? That's where I'm kind of struggling.
As I take it, understand, and correct me if I'm wrong, this is more of a formality.
Okay.
To bring our code into compliance, but we have to go through the proper process to do it.
Okay, that's how I'm kind of, we really don't have to have a big, strong role.
And Will's going to come up and correct me.
I do believe like an added element is just partially keeping you up to date. In our procedures code, we do have the ability to, you know, essentially have just a review session with the planning commission and then have a hearing with the board. But I think for items like this, we like to allow for the additional opportunity, partially just to keep you in the loop of these state changes and how our code functions, but we'll go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, your planning manager, Will Groves, good evening. I was going to come up and make very much Nicole's point that certainly as our citizen involvement body, we want to give an opportunity for you to be aware of changes, especially extensive changes being made to the code. And also, you know, in kind of the public hearing, to the extent people have questions, we want to make a forum available for that to get those answered. And in addition, you know, I think, I don't know that there's anything glaring that comes out of this, but, you know, you might reasonably ask, hey, you're doing this in the farm zone, should we do this in the MUA 10 zone? You know, so there are places that, you know, we're maybe being mandated to do something at a state level that might be a smart idea to propagate someplace else, or might be like, hey, I know somebody in the R10 zone who does something similar, should we consider allowing it there as well? So just a, you know, an opportunity to think broadly, or maybe later on, we'll be doing something in there, R10 zone. And you'll remember, didn't we do this in the EFU zone? Or isn't it handled differently there? So just really kind of keeping you up to date and in context with this and looking for synergies. And particularly looking for things that you might be aware of as kind of our citizen representatives that you've heard out there where, hey, this, you know, we maybe should flag this for the legislature, you know, they made a rule change to this and it's producing some weird effect. You know, we should probably alert the board and in future legislative sessions potentially try to fix this, you know? It's causing a problem for my neighbor would be sort of the, you know, these things that come from the state certainly are more difficult for us to change than other things, but, you know, they are intended to be responsive to on-the-ground conditions over time. Making sure that people are involved with this is important.
Anybody else? All right, thank you. And I don't see anything else on the agenda other than staff comments, so go for it.
Sure, oh, gosh, I wasn't, yes, so some updates. We had our second hearing on the Deschutes County 2040 reconsideration on May 21st. And the board left the record open until May 28th. We received 95 comments into the record. And the board held their deliberations this past Wednesday, just yesterday, and gave the initial vote two to one to adopt the kind of slightly revised version of the 2040 plan. Specifically, they chose to revert the language for our rural industrial and rural commercial policies back to the language from the 2011 plan. The changes that we made weren't substantive in nature. They were just kind of cleanup for readability, but they weren't really necessary changes. So we just decided in the abundance of caution to just revert back to the original language. They did choose to vote to remove the two goals for each of those items as well. There wasn't a necessity for those goals, we just added them as best practice. But again, removed those based on just some concerns that we heard from Land Watch and their petitioners brief. And aside from that, we, through the process, used that as an opportunity to create a red line draft of the 2040 plan that compared the 2011 language to the 2040 plan language to make it clear what we carried over, what was maintained, what was amended, deleted and added. And that was to address a concern from Land Watch that the process in which we adopted the comprehensive plan essentially wiped the slate clean on previously acknowledged policies. And that was not our understanding or our intent. So through this process, we were able to add that into the record and we'll be able to address that in the adopting ordinance. So the board is scheduled tentatively to have first reading for that new ordinance adopting the 2040 plan on June 25th. So I'll keep you updated. And I believe that's the only update I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Will?
Yeah, so coming up, you know, you noticed the content's a little thin tonight, and that's because a lot of my team are either working on things that you've already touched or bringing things to you in the near future. So of course, Tanya and Tarek are well on the way to timely delivering the CNO packages for the Goal Five and subdivisions. Those have made their way through the board and look like they're going to be adopted in time for the end of this month deadline to enact those, so those are in great shape. Tanya's also got a scheduled date coming forward for the Dark Skies work session. Our next meeting is, we'll have you have some actual information for you headed to a July 10th hearing in association with that. Nicole's also begun working on, you remember during the work plan that there was interest in a revision to the 10% minor variance for lot line adjustments? The board showed an interest in that, so Nicole's bringing that forward. Kyle is currently working on the final, what we think will likely be a final module for clear and objective, which has to do with multifamily housing. This is a priority, given that the sewer lines going into Terrebonne, that the possibility for, you know, someone saying that, you know, your code isn't clear and objective for this new apartment complex I want to put in is relevant. We come back to the board with some regularity to ask them for guidance about what we use our long-range resources in association with. And, you know, our work plan's a kind of a chance to do that. But I think that I anticipate being in sort of late summer, mid-late summer, coming back to the board and letting them know what our resources look like and seeing what directions they want to go in. You know, the board showed, just as you directed, the board showed some interest in thinking about kind of natural hazards and in particular fire. There may be some interest in kicking off a process to see if, you know, in the absence of state fire maps, if there's any sort of local precautions that we want to take. Some of you may recall that years ago, there was a process where the county was thinking about broadly applying our 327 construction standards. And, you know, there's some interest in maybe revisiting that for areas or in ways. It'll be interesting to see if the board wants to enact some, enact something like that, you know? Also thinking about some of our area plans, you know, there's definitely a renewed interest in Terrebonne, given that, you know, that if, you know, if and when sewer gets in the ground there, we might expect rapid development. And the code isn't currently built to imagine, you know, a very, you know, a Terrebonne that has significant, you know, multifamily housing associated with it. So be interested to see if the board is interested, is, would like to put that forward. Certainly Kyle is poised to, as the statewide fire maps are presumably to be repealed, although that hasn't happened yet, he's ready to act quickly to remove those requirements from our local code to match state statute and also ensure that we're not imposing restrictions on people that aren't, you know, aren't matching the state requirements. So that's really, that's where my, that's where my team's at and my energy's at. And you should see kind of increasing, increasing kind of density of content as we go into the summer. But right now, I've got a lot of people either on the other side of you or coming your way.
Peter?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a few things for updates. The fiscal year 26 work plan was approved by Board of County Commissioners on May 28th. So as Will noted, he'll be returning to the Board of County Commissioners to seek direction. There's a lot of noteworthy projects that are listed that the Planning Commission vetted and stated, you know, certain interest. And you'll recall you prioritize some projects in addition to when capacity is available, some working groups, some panels and whatnot. One of the things that I'm asking Will to do, he noted it very, very well, that there's renewed interest in natural hazards and wildfire mitigation. There's interest, of course, in Newbury Country Plan. Terrebonne is actively trying to, you know, put sewer into the right-of-way where the couplet is currently being redesigned. The other thing that we will likely introduce to the board, and I'm pausing only because I just think it's important to express this. So the, there's, as the Planning Commission has experienced secondhand, there's been a lot of conversation about plan amendment zone changes, what it means to zone out of EFU. There's a lot of publicity about projects that have been controversial through the local decision-making process. And I think it's going to be important for Will as the planning manager to talk about the high desert zone concept. Now, I don't, we just need to introduce that. We need, and see if the board is interested in having us return for a scope of work. What is a high desert zone concept? Basically, is there interest from the board to think about how we zone, for applicants that can demonstrate that they can zone out of EFU? Does it make sense to think about a policy framework that would then inform a zoning, a zone that would address rural land use opportunities? At the same time, addressing resiliency and, you know, resiliency as it pertains to natural hazards, resiliency as it pertains to reliance on groundwater, compatibility to nearby rural and albeit agricultural lands? There's a lot to unpack there. But, and you've kind of heard this concept being kind of tossed around for a while. But in light of the issue of rezoning EFU lands becoming more and more prominent, and there's reasons for that. There's a lot of land that can demonstrate that they don't have agricultural soils, they, and that zoning out of EFU, that landscape or that subject property is, can be demonstrated not to be, in what I'm using imperfect terminology, but can be demonstrated it's not incompatible with nearby or conjoining uses. And it's clear that the process today is as controversial as ever. It's complex, it's legalistic, it's litigious. But looking at opportunities to have a community conversation that talk about these opportunities continuing, if they can be demonstrated, but looking again at a different framework for it. So that's a lot to unpack. But I think the timing, as Will noted, there's just a number of projects that just are, is it galvanizing, is there a certain amount of momentum that I think obligate us? And while all of this kind of being placed on Will's lap, to articulate the timing of these types of projects so the board can make some informed decisions. Of course, we can't do it all, but we have some renewed capacity, as you are experiencing right now. Clear and Objective code amendments are coming to a close, and we're very, very appreciative that those processes that the Planning Commission helped convene didn't generate a lot of controversy. But, there shouldn't be a but. It's an and. We have, we have the opportunity to demonstrate that we have long-range planners that are ready to be deployed on projects that have real meaning in the counting and getting the board to think about prioritizing them. So I just wanted to share with you that we don't have a date set for that. We'll certainly let you know when, Will can let you know when we're closer to that. But I think it's really important to have some of these meaningful conversations. And as Will noted, you know, the wildfire, I'm transitioning now, the issue of wildfire and wildfire mitigation, of course, we have a thunderstorm that's literally over this building. So the vulnerability to wildfire remains very, very high, especially this time of year. You know, there's, we have, I'm switching to legislative update, but Senate Bill 75 and Senate Bill 83, Senate Bill 83 is the legislation that would repeal the statewide wildfire map. And Senate Bill 75 would basically remove provisions that currently require rural accessory dwelling units to be fire-hardened, regardless of whether or not they're in a wildfire hazard designation. It was, that was a compromise. Well, we need to get these, the legislation needs to be in sync. These two pieces of legislation are currently being used for, in the legislature, kind of for political reasons. The adoption process has been delayed. This has been widely reported. The state Democrats are using the delay to try to leverage more funding for wildfire prevention or mitigation. But I suspect these two bills will eventually pass, and by the removal of the wildfire map, we still live in a fire-adapted ecosystem. And we have a commissioner, actually, who's our chair, who, for those who are maybe watching remotely, who does, in their day-to-day duties, does respond to wildfires. So we still have wildfire-related responsibilities, and so we want to bring the topic of wildfire resiliency, potentially the fire hardening, looking at wildland urban interface designations that maybe don't necessarily apply to agricultural lands, but apply to rural residential exceptionaries. So that's a lot to unpack. It's a lot to consider, but we certainly believe it's going to be important to bring to the board, just given the vulnerability that we have in our communities. So that's another important, you know, project that we want the board to make some informed decisions. So staying on the topic of legislation, as I'm kind of just transitioning, I wanted to let, there's two other bills. One is still moving forward. It has an application to Southern Deschutes County. It's Senate Bill 1154. It has an emphasis on groundwater quality, and it's had numerous iterations. But the framework as presently proposed, and this has been reported in the paper recently, there's some environmental organizations that have expressed opposition, and they've removed their support for Senate Bill 1154. But as it pertains to Southern Deschutes County, it is noteworthy in that it would empower the Department of Environmental Quality, based on substantial evidence and data, to declare, have the ability to declare to their Environmental Quality Commission what's called a groundwater quality area of concern. So we know that in Southern, in Lower Umatilla Basin, where the Portimora is, that's a groundwater management area, and that has significant nitrate contamination in the aquifer today. The groundwater area of concern is kind of a, is a yellow light, if we wanted to use an analogy, where a groundwater management area is, that's a red light. Like, we've got real environmental concerns based on loading in the groundwater. In this case, it would allow a declaration to be made. There would, it would require the formation of various committees, a lead agency, providing advisory opportunities, citizen input, but it would ultimately provide education and resources in a voluntary way to alert people to, in this case, the vulnerability of nitrates in Southern Deschutes County. It speaks to monitoring, a more robust monitoring effort than, I dare say, has been happening for the last several years. And it also empowers agencies like the Oregon Health Authority, the Oregon Rota Resources Department. So there's some concerns that it's empowering state agencies in ways that they haven't been through legislation in the past, but as I've just summarized, it has some real applicability to Southern Deschutes County. Presumably, there could be funding that would, could be made available that, again, speak to the importance of, you know, advanced wastewater treatment systems and other options that not only deal with the nitrate load that's happening, but also the impacts, epidemiologically, you know, what it means to, you know, to be drinking contaminated, or maybe contaminated is too strong of a word, water that's been impacted by nitrates. So it's a significant piece of legislation. It is unique in that it's empowering state agencies in ways that maybe haven't been in the last several decades, but wanted Commissioner Williams, just for you to be aware of that. The Board of County Commissioners has taken a neutral position on it, but like I said, it's still an active bill that we're monitoring. And, you know, at such time that we initiated a Newberry Country Plan, you know, if this legislation was in effect, you know, there would be some timing, or you may want, we may want to think about, you know, how that legislation aligns with Newberry Country, because that legislation has some real applicability to that particular sub-basin. One more other piece of legislation, and then I'll turn it back over to the Chair, is I wanted to let you know that Senate, there's a bill that did pass and was signed by the governor, and it's Senate Bill 1129. It pertains to urban reserves. And it was sponsored by Senator Anthony Broadman, who's the Senator representing Ben. And what it does, and the board did support this, is it, for just urban reserves, so urban reserves allow jurisdictions, excuse me, allow cities to plan beyond a 20-year horizon, as, you know, which that applies to urban growth boundaries. You can go beyond the 20-year horizon with an urban reserve area designation, allows you to plan your infrastructure, plan public facilities, protect transportation corridors. And this legislation, which directs the Land Conservation Development Commission to do rulemaking to implement it, basically allows cities to discount rural residential areas that I would characterize as being built out and committed and are vibrant in their own way, because, under the basis that it's, and you have to document this, that it's too expensive to urbanize these rural residential areas. So case in point would be Deschutes River Woods. Deschutes River Woods is outside the urban growth boundary. It's largely built out, and with this legislation and with the rules that presumably LCDC is going to adopt, a city like Ben could discount Deschutes River Woods, for the reasons that I've just described, and look elsewhere.
They jump over it.
Or they could, yes, they could, they could, they could consider other lands that are not exclusive farm, excuse me, that are not an exception, and they might even be able, if the need was large enough, they could discount them and go to dry EFU, dry exclusive farm. So it's, it's really good legislation, in my opinion, because, you know, what I think cities, in the city of Ben, as a case example, you know, it's easier to master plan a larger tract of land that isn't under multiple ownership, that doesn't have a number of investments or infrastructure, and, you know, with everyone's recognition that we have a housing shortage and a housing need, the ability to discount those, and I say it legitimately, these committed, vibrant rural residential areas and to be able to look elsewhere. So it was, I thought, some refreshing legislation that came out of the legislature this year that, again, it only applies to urban reserves, but we know that, in the coordination that Will and his team are doing with the city of Ben, that the city of Ben is considering an urban reserve program once they complete their next urban growth boundary process. So this is still, you know, three to five, six years out, but it's a good piece of legislation and wanted to bring it to your attention. So I have one other thing, just to let you know. On Wednesday, the Board of County Commissioners is going to adopt their budget for fiscal year '26. And I'm very appreciative of the budget that the board adopted. I think I may have mentioned this to you in the past, but this is the, this is my fourth budget as the Community Development Director, and it's the first budget where the Community Development Department has been in the black. And, and so that we had to make some, you know, we've made some difficult decisions in recent years. We've had some fee increases, but it's, the budget as proposed, and of course, we don't know what the future holds, but as it stands today, the Community Development Department, it feels like very much that we're on stable footing. And for the Planning Commission, it means, you know, you have a dedicated, you know, long-range planning team, supported by current planning and others, that are well-positioned to address Deschutes County's growth and management issues as we head into the next fiscal year. So anyway, just wanted to let you know that that process is coming to conclusion next Wednesday. So that's a lot of information, but hopefully sparks some interest, and we will certainly keep you informed as we get into the next fiscal year. So thanks for your time.
Thank you. I was intrigued, we were talking about the high desert zone. How would you anticipate that being different than the MEA zone? I've always considered that to be a transitory zone, the combination similar to what you've described the other one as.
Well, I mean, the multiple-use agricultural zone is an exception. I mean, and I'm, I don't want to get ahead of.
Anyhow, I was just, I'm just curious.
There's a lot of levers to pull and twist and, you know, to turn and lift, but I think the multiple-use agricultural 10-zone recognized a certain land use pattern when it was established in the early 80s. Lands that really weren't residential subdivisions, but really weren't farming, they had some access to irrigation. And it doesn't mean that a high desert zone concept couldn't import elements of the multiple-use agriculture or the rural residential 10-zone. I think with the high desert zone concept, and this is a bit more of a kind of a Jerry Maguire kind of, you know, kind of as I conceptualize this possibility, this opportunity, is that, you know, what we know that we are seeing plan amendment zone changes out of EFU, and they're landing in zones that, for those that are potentially interested in rural residential development, where the minimum lot or partial size is 10 acres. And, and we have, we live and work in an environment where that's controversial in some circles, and there's concerns about, you know, resiliency in terms of fire hazards, impacts to wildlife and open space, impacts to agricultural lands and other related issues.
Ending services and infrastructure.
Right. And so with the high desert zone allows for a community conversation to think about, you know, what if it was, again, it's got to be set up through a comprehensive plan framework with goals and policies that inform the zone, that non-resourced land amendments, they can demonstrate that they're not agricultural lands, could land into. But it could be a zone that, for example, and I'm not going to get into the lot or partial size. You could, could you still have 10-acre minimum lot or partial size? That's a, that's a political decision. That's a public policy decision. But you could require all rural residential developments to be clustered, which would require Clear and Objective standards, because you now know, we have to have Clear and Objective standards for housing. You could require shared wells. You could require that it's all fire-hardened, that these buildings are fire-hardened. You could require that the open space in a cluster development has to be managed, not only for defensible space, but for wildlife. And, and so what the high desert zone is trying, I think, I say this imperfectly, is trying to address both, both audiences who engage in non-resourced lands discussions. Those that recognize that we, we have clearly don't have, we have land that's owned EFU that is not agricultural. We demonstrated that. It's been acknowledged, that there are property rights associated with that, and that there are economic opportunities that could be afforded. And on the other side, we have, and I'm paraphrasing and overly generalizing, we have conversations about, concerns about the impacts that rural development has in the rural environment, how to make it compatible, knowing that we have vulnerabilities, there's concerns about vulnerabilities to groundwater and natural hazards. And this is trying to take both of those, the way I see it, is trying to find a win-win, trying to find consensus where you can establish a zone, maybe it's a different, a series of sub-zones, different areas, I mean, with different development standards, but looking at, recognizing, I think, that this type of, these types of demands and these types of circumstances are not going away, because clearly, property owners have been able, and it can continue, to submit applications to zone out. I mean, it's happening with the Park District. It's happening with Cascade Academy. It's happened with the Department of State Lands. I mean, we have numerous examples. Deschutes County has the most non-resourced lands amendments that have been acknowledged in the state. And so it's an opportunity with the Planning Commission being at the forefront, so maybe careful, careful what I'm conceptualizing. I'm kidding. I think, I just think it's time to have the conversation, if the board is compelled, that it's, it aligns with their work plan and other projects. But, you know, every non-resourced land amendment that I just mentioned, too, have been controversial. And this, this concept, this program that Will and his team could presumably prepare in a scope of work with a community outreach element that would be robust, would allow for that kind of discourse, because I think that's what's missing in this conversation. But in no way am I trying to speak for the board. This is just my own opinion. But given the number of plan amendment zone changes that we've had recently, it seems like the timing of at least asking the question of the board to bring back a scope of work that could vet a timeline, how you would engage the community, how the Planning Commission would be involved, the types of uses, the types of development standards, how to tackle this issue in the, with the acknowledgement that today, right now, I am in zone changes, zoning out of you can happen and are happening. And is there a different way that reflects our understanding of the bill to natural environment in 2025? To look at ways that these types of opportunities could potentially occur with appropriate development standards that address some of the issues that many of our neighbors and, you know, have articulated, that gives them some real trepidation. So it's a long-winded response, and, and there's a lot of levers, you know, and pulleys that would determine how to land that, if there's even support for it. But I think it acknowledges that the non-resourced land program that we have it today is as divisive as ever, and is there a different way that we can approach these column opportunities in a way that is reflective of Deschutes County in the 21st century and, as we, you know, head into 2020, or head into, you know, the second half of 2025 and into 2026? into 2026. So.
But it's certainly an interesting concept, and I, it'll be interesting to see where we go from here. But all I was getting at was, is it, you know, maybe we've already got a starting point rather than starting from scratch, and that, and that the existing zone may be close to what you're conceptualizing.
And that might be a concept that, that is introduced if there's a scope of work. You would put all of it on the table. And, and in no way is my articulation, the, the bright light that this program could go to. I think you bring all of these issues up and you talk about it, and, and see what, what is galvanizing to the community. It will, it would be one of the most complex, controversial projects that we've undertaken in some time, but I think this team is ready for it, and I think the Planning Commission is ready for it.
So that's what we're doing in two weeks, right?
Well, first, we have to, we have to get to the board and talk. I mean, there's other noteworthy projects, and I don't mean to put this at the front line. I just think it's, it's important to introduce it, if nothing else, to get the Board of County Commissioners to be thinking about it, because it is, it is a topic that is not going away in ways that wildfire hazard isn't going away, in ways that, you know, dark skies wasn't going away. And so it, I, we just want the board to make informed decisions. We have a small team, they're exceptional, and making sure the board is, you know, expressive of how they want this team to be maximized over the next six to 12 months. So, thanks for that.
Right. If I might, if I might jump in on that a little bit, something.
You already had your turn.
Thank you. Is just also, you know, something to think about is ways, some of, some other places like Boulder County approached this, you know, thinking about innovative ways. You know, one way to see of this, you know, somebody as a property owner might see this as like, well, I had a pretty good deal at RR10, and this high-desert zone is a worse deal fundamentally. You know, it comes, it, it could come with more restrictions and just be a fundamental reduction in opportunity. You know, some things that could be potentially considered, and, you know, we would really have to explore this, and again, the board would have to direct us to explore this, might even include legislative concepts where, you know, if you did this clustering that the open space parcel somehow, maybe it had a agricultural and open space conservation easement, limited the uses, but in return for that, maybe you don't have to pay back taxes as you, you know, as you get the, you get a very limited residential development opportunity in association with it. So we've seen other jurisdictions, particularly, again, Boulder County is really a big example of this. They have a huge amount of voluntary agricultural conservation easements, where, you know, a small rocky part of a property is given a limited residential development opportunity, but then the rest of the property is put into some sort of, you know, depending as appropriate agricultural, open space, wildlife conservation easement, and the landowners receiving tax benefits associated with that, you know, maybe little or no tax associated with it. But now, when you come in out of EFU and into, you know, the RR10 zone, you've got to, you know, you've got to come clean with, you know, 10 years of back taxes as you come in to develop those for a lot of those development opportunities. So trying to think, I know that it's been a concern of at least some of the Planning Commission, thinking about incentives. I would, I'd love to, if possible, I'll land this to where it's something that's actually attractive, where it's, you know, it's, it addresses some issues like shared wells. You know, the advantage of a three-person shared well is that the $15,000, 15,000 gallons a day that's allowed per exempt well would then be split between three users. And so, you know, it would reduce, it would reduce the demand from these exempt wells. It also would, you know, maybe incentivize doing it through this pathway rather than through the really litigious EFU process that, you know, is, is, you know, as, as of right now, you can do something pretty similar to this, but it comes with a lot of litigation and effort. And maybe if there was a legislative push to streamline getting to some of these things in return for benefits that, you know, other parties want, maybe there's a smart deal here where everybody says, yeah, that's, that's better, and that everybody likes it a little bit. And so I, at least at the outset, and again, you know, be it board direction, kind of envision a work process where initially we're not moving towards creating necessarily a zone, but maybe having an outreach, you know, and saying, let's, let's host public conversations. Let's see what, let's have people talk. Let's have somebody from Boulder County talk about in front of the Planning Commission, you know, by Zoom, about how their agricultural easements work. Let's have the tax, you know, folks see what's, you know, possible. Let's think a little bit about, you know, where, where legislation seems feasible. What are, you know, what are the smart places? What are the levers we can pull? And so maybe initially, an effort of scoping, like, what's possible? What's, you know, what's, what's the dream, getting that in front of the board? And then as a second step, do you want to go, go on this board? Do you want to try some of this? So again, you know, something to think about. I think that we're going to just see increased kind of litigation and conflict associated with, with rural development if we try to continue to do it under the current deal. And I see an opportunity to maybe achieve everybody's goals in significant ways through some reworking of the existing system, you know, again, not, you know, allowing rampant rural development, which, you know, is a concern of a lot of community, but also not requiring, not using the courts to solve this problem. You know, somebody trying to put a house on a rural property might go on $100,000 ride to Luba and back, and, you know, and then it all turns on whether a comma was in one place or another, and that doesn't seem like the right way to make these decisions either. So just kind of thinking about maybe a project to explore that and see if the board's interested in seeing what's possible.
Great. Thanks. Stephanie, do you have anything?
Thank you for asking, Chair. Stephanie Marshall, Senior Assistant Legal Counsel.
Better keep it to a half hour or less.
Oh, yeah. Well, gosh, we've done a pretty quick meeting here. Thank you. And again, sorry for, for testifying back there. I don't have any updates, other than I've just continued to work with, with planning staff on the comprehensive plan amendment package and clearing objective packages. We've got a couple of other quasi-judicial matters like Thornburg that are currently ongoing, and appeals were just filed of the Luba decision on the 710 properties, where they upheld, Luba upheld the county, but now we've got, all the same petitioners have filed notices of intent to the Court of Appeals. So those appeals will be.
So it did get appealed?
It did get appealed, yes, to the Oregon Court of Appeals. So we should have some updates on dates and whatnot. They also requested oral argument today. So.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think that's it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Hofkamp?
Oh, gee, I'm just totally absorbed in this notion of a high-desert zone. So I, just, I guess, a brief observation there. You know, I, I get it that, as both of you phrased it, you know, continuing to kind of litigate these things, and it's going, it's going to get worse, not better, is maybe not the best or most efficient way to go about that from any perspective. But, and I, I get the notion that not, you know, it's, it's awkward thinking of rural, excuse me, rural lands outside UGBZ as either agricultural or suitable for development or just wasted. So there's other values out there for lands, and Oregon has been so thoughtful about that. I hope we would respect our heritage in that regards, too. And, you know, when I hear, use, both you use the term land use opportunities to a lot of individuals and organizations out there, that's really fraught opportunities, right? I know you're well aware of that. So anyway, really intriguing concept. I agree with you, Chair Cyrus, that it is intriguing. I would hope, Justin, even, even in the early stages of beginning to think about that, that we're already balancing in terms of opportunities, opportunities for protections and preservation and open space, as well as, you know, potential development or resource extractive kind of uses. So anyway, therein lies opportunity and risk for us. Anyway, yeah. So the other thought that came to mind, and maybe this is best, kind of dangerous thinking out loud like this, but for our next joint meeting that we have with the Board of Commissioners, I recall from eight years on the City Planning Commission, that in addition to our legislative issues, that there, there were some issues where the City Planning Commission had actual decision-making authority, most prominently WAS developments. And not, not at all attempting to infringe upon the governing body's authority here, just a suggestion in terms of efficiency and staff time, and eliminating redundancies of proceedings that are before us and then go before the Board of Commissioners, if they were interested. And things like that were, I don't know if I want to call them routine or non-substantive, things like clear and objective updates, conformance with that, conformance with state rulemaking, ORS, those kinds of cleanup languages and so forth. And I assume it would change charters or rules or whatever like that, roles, official descriptions of the Planning Commission and so forth, if they were interested in delegation of those kinds of issues. I would imagine that this Planning Commission or future Planning Commissions would be receptive to the notion. Anyway, I'll probably forget that when the time comes around for our next joint meeting, but just want to put that out there, that idea out there, that only where it makes sense, and only where the board, you know, is interested in the Planning Commission sort of taking this off their plate and saving some staff time. Just a thought. And that's all I've got. Thank you.
Commissioner Williams?
Good conversation this evening.
Commissioner Piers?
Also, nope. No comments.
Commissioner Kelly?
Yes, no comments. Good meeting.
And is Commissioner Stockkamp still on the, or online?
Can you hear me?
Yep, there you go.
Oh, perfect. No comment on my end. Thanks for the good discussion tonight.
All right. And I'd just like to thank everybody for a nice, fast, efficient meeting. And if there's nothing else, we're adjourned.